Testing, one, two, three, testing, testing, testing. One, two, three. One, two, three. Can you hear it?
Yeah. I think there's people actually writing their questions in the text of the video. Although, Charles Williams is writing them.
Mary Mackin, very good to see you. You've got some results. Yeah, and how. What I'm going to do is, I have to be sure. It's a reason why we're here. Last, all of this one, I think we want to get select one product when we get to.
I don't want to.
That'll be right. Um, so it's very exciting for me. There's a lot of things that we've raised, right, reasons. I don't seem to know what.
We have, we do, yeah, we have. Leading to.
No, not at all, not at all.
Well, it's sabonier.
Right, right here in the middle is where I want. Right. Excellent, I'm really pleased. Well, I'm going to say that even though till today, we didn't realise what the scale would be, the fact is, I'm absolutely indebted to having so many people to talk to.
Well, you've certainly got their interest.
Great, well, what I'm going to do, I'm just going to get hold of, I'm wanting to be able to go through the overnights, here we go. Right, so this is one evening earlier this week. So I want to be able to talk through the sorts of things that Bedfordshire Police have to deal with. And I know that you've built a very good relationship with Chief Constable.
Yes, that's right, yes.
And in fact, I know that you have the PCSOs.
Even they had foot control in my town.
Well, you came down here, you have more police officers here on that particular day than Downing Street.
Yeah, that was, and I tell you what, I really appreciate it, Catherine. Lovely to meet you, thank you for coming here.
I don't know if this will pick up, but.
Well, you've got the top of the way, that's the screen. Um, and it doesn't like. Personally, I'm not going to use.
Mary Mackin, if you'd like to, this side, this side.
Where, where are you? I'll be, I'll be right, I'll be right. I've got to just check, I might just keep this very long, am I going to use first name term?
Have come up to five, yes, I mean, they usually say submission, but that's only for people who don't, when they come into meetings, they don't know who you are.
No, that's fine. And I will start by putting some ground rules in, I thought, you do your piece, just so everyone's aware.
And I just want to echo it at the beginning, that's fine. Fine, absolutely fine, and then Gary's going to come in here. Right, so Leah's coming here, Gary, if you could go there, Nick, if you could go at the end, if you wouldn't mind. Fantastic. Um, and we've got, as I said, in the end, have we got our BBC who are anticipating from the Shepherd area?
Sally is here, yes.
Yes, okay, so Sally's outside, I'll say she'll.
She, she won't come in just tomorrow.
She'll come inside, right, that's absolutely fine. Okay, okay. The good thing is, and what's really impressive about this, public meetings are generally only attended by people of a certain age, as we know, who are no more representative of the population in, in Shepherd, as the people who ring in on BBC4. Whereas, the good thing here is to put a lot of people across the.
Most of these people here are town councillors.
Oh, so, yes, thank you, Gary.
There's about seven, uh, town, our town councillors and their. Your way, this afternoon.
Are you?
Sorry, next way, not your way, sorry. And we've got a unitary councillor here as well, Tony, Tony Brown, who you probably recognize with the white hair.
Yes, absolutely, obsessed with speed cameras.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. That's it, so I've been talking to, so they're all aware, I've been talking to people here about speed cameras from today.
That's it, yeah. That's fine. Not a problem, that's fine, thanks. Yeah? Okay, that's great.
I know Shepherd really well, pain spots virtually, was virtually opposite. And before that, the council practice were there, oh, my accountants have been kind of here for years, I lived in Amptill, so I know it really well. And what I've done tonight is I drive all round to see if there's any signs of any trouble, and please to know there's none.
It's certainly changed.
It has, it has. Yes, I'll see, I'll see Tony afterwards, because it's a standing room between us, I say, you're a specialist, speed camera, I said, I, we're going to talk about how you actually can drive down hills seriously injured to get that.
The guy, the guy sitting beside him is Mark Midyard, he's the new ward councillor, he took over from Lou Burton, who passed away a while ago.
Oh, right, okay.
Uh, he's, uh, he's, uh, he's the new broom sweeping cleaner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'd like to start off by, I, I think most of you know who I am, I'm Paul Mackin, uh, and for my sins, I'm the mayor of Shepherd. Um, I'd like to thank you all for coming, uh, tonight, to take the time, uh, to come into the STMA, which is partly refurbished, as you see, this bit isn't done yet, but the rest of it is. Uh, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Catherine, uh, for, well, taking the time to come and see us and talk to, uh, the members of the public who have been so desperate, and as you can see, this is one of the last, largest public meetings that we've had in Shepherd. Um, and they, they are all dying to hear what you've got to say. So, I, I'll hand over to Lee Sell, who's going to chair the meeting, he's going to look at the questions and he's going to present the questions, uh, to Catherine later on, and Catherine also has some stuff to say to you, so I'll hand over.
Thank you very much indeed, well, I'm delighted to come and speak to you, and that so many of you are here, and that it looks like a very representative audience, right the way across the age groups here in Shepherd, which is very well known to me. Not least because my accountants, who've moved out recently, but were di- almost directly opposite the turning to this building. I lived in Amptill for many years, I was backwards and forwards to Shepherd, so I know it very well. I think it's probably useful for me to explain to you what I do as a police and crime commissioner. As you've heard, my name's Catherine Holloway, so with a surname like Holloway, I'm finally in the job that I was born for. Uh, but it's very important to me to explain what the PCC does and what the PCC does not do as well. Because obviously, I'm the only, only the second person who's ever occupied this role. I think the easiest way to explain it is that a PCC is actually the chair of policing as an organisation. And if you like, the chief constable, John Boucher, and now DCC, Gary Forsyth, who's joined us tonight, are the CEO and COO in charge of the operational side of policing. In other words, what the PCC does not do is direct the chief constable and his team as to how policing is deployed and where it is deployed. However, it's fair to say that if members of the public bring a particular issue to my attention, then I make sure that the executive of the force, the chief constable and DCC are aware of it. And that's exactly what happened in the case of Shepherd and the letters that came from Paul Mackin and others to us this summer. As a result of which, in part, I was able to alert the chief constable, but I want you to be assured tonight that the force was already aware of it. I always draw a distinction between the visible policing, which I'm trying to support the force in introducing, because I oversee the budget and I set the council tax that raises the council tax preset part of policing. That is what I want, but of course, there's invisible policing going on in the town as well. Uh, and in fact, Inspector Masters, who's at the end of the table here, Inspector Nick Masters, who's responsible for this area, as the community inspector, will explain to you the action that's been ongoing right the way throughout this summer, not just recently. And I'm going to ask the DCC to explain how Bedfordshire Police deploys its limited resources. Because if anyone thinks that that is purely in response to petitions or individuals speaking out, it is not. It is done on the basis of evidence, as he will explain to you. Uh, I will be returning to the subject of funding and council tax later on, because they are specific questions that have been asked of me. But I can say this to you, I have been in this task for twenty month, one months. I am an accidental politician, and at no point have I played political football with this police force. That's precisely why I stood for the role and came into it. But I have very robustly made the funding argument, and I can look every one of you in the whites of the eyes, and every one of the officers and staff of Bedfordshire Police, and tell you that absolutely no more could have been done by anyone. And I'll explain to you all of the actions that have been taken. So I'd like to explain something to you about the force, because I don't expect any of you to be experts in Bedfordshire Police. We have one thousand, one hundred and twenty-four officers in Bedfordshire Police, which sounds like a large number, for six hundred and forty-four thousand people in this county. And thereafter, you see the challenge. This county contains the third highest terror threat in the entire country. It has had a footprint in every one of the attacks on London this year, or last year, as it was, in 2017. It has serious organised crime problems that are shared by the counties that are close to London, because London has become a particularly inhospitable place to do business if you are involved in serious organised crime, ironically, because of all of the surveillance and so on that's in place over counter terror. It makes it very difficult for you to operate and move around the city. And these people are business people. If it costs you two hundred pounds a week to run a vulnerable child in London, to be taking your calls on so-called county lines, but in London, on the mobile phone lines too, and it costs you fifty pounds a week in Bedfordshire, where do you think they're going to be moving? And that is the task that Bedfordshire Police have, to deal with both serious organised crime and also counter terror. Serious, serious challenges. We work, and particularly my office works, to spread the word with town councils, exactly like that which has spread the message to me tonight, that you want to meet with me. Uh, we are dealing with raising awareness over things like cuckooing, which most of you will never even have heard of, because you are not involved in criminality. Cuckooing is when these individuals involved in serious organised crime and drug dealing move out of London, find a home of somebody who is vulnerable, perhaps with autism, perhaps with dementia, and they move in for short periods of time to deal drugs from their premises, while they wait for the police to catch up, and then they're on to another household. You'd think it wouldn't happen here? In the recent months, we've stopped two, closed down two premises in Biggleswade, just up the road. Serious, serious problems. And rising youth violence, not just here in Shepherd, but right the way across the county, where increasingly schools tell us that fourteen-year-olds are more prepared than ever before to carry knives, partly because they mistakenly believe that that's for their protection, rather than intending to get involved in crime. But it's one of the reasons that my office and part of my role is involved in education in our schools and work around gangs. I've paid the Home Office to come in to put together local area profiles in each of our three counties around where our gang problems are, and to draw together all of the information that the local authorities and the police and charities and the youth offending services hold, to try to drive down youth crime. So, that is primarily my task in relation to policing. In terms of the Ministry of Justice funding and the funding from the police force that I have, in a so-called Commissioners' Fund, which has just opened, and which closes for bids on the nineteenth of February at five o'clock, I am responsible for administering over a million pounds worth of funds, between one and one and a half million, to improve victim support and to improve community safety. And I'm interested in the people in this room, I don't just want the usual suspects to come forward to me, I want individuals who have good ideas about how to improve these matters in their own towns, which includes some of you who'll be in the room tonight. And before we talk about the specifics of what's been happening in Shepherd over this summer, I want to explain why the town council has decided to put questions to me in the way that they do, because usually, if I'm quite happy to look into the whites of your eyes, I'm certainly quite happy to answer any question you have to put. The police, Bedfordshire Police, have spent months putting together cases that are now going through the criminal justice system to bring these individuals to justice who have caused an enormous difficulty for you and created an atmosphere of fear at times in this town, particularly for elderly residents. The last thing we want to do here tonight is to make a remark which allows these individuals and their lawyers to ensure they escape justice. I am not in the business of helping people to evade police action. I am in the business of supporting the police to make sure that those who are responsible for this are prosecuted with the full weight of the law. So, we will move on to that shortly, but I would like to give you a snapshot of what Bedfordshire Police is dealing with, with its nine-nine-nine response officers every night. And I've asked just for a night earlier in this week, so that you understand that when the problem started in this town, in the spring, late spring, early summer, and it was at a low level of antisocial behaviour, by which I mean there were reports of rubbish fires in bins, for example, coming in. This is the sort of incident that those in force control are having to assess every single moment of every single day in Bedfordshire to decide where those nine-nine-nine officers, who are extremely limited in this county, could be sent. So this is one night earlier this week. An individual who'd been attacked by a group of five to six men, and sustained injuries, including a broken cheekbone. Two men entering a house, brandishing a knife and an axe, assaulting a man, taking some money, making off on a motorbike, and threatening a female informant who had a knife held to her throat. Two masked men entering a betting shop, one of them armed with a crowbar. They stole four thousand, three hundred pounds in cash, there was another man outside, and the main offender smashed the glass of the counter and then demanded that the member of staff filled the bag. Reports of two police of a number of individuals running around Bedford with knives, believed to be connected to the ongoing gang problem that my team are working so hard to help the local authorities and police get on top of. Uh, one of them, known as Machete Man, attempted to cause injuries to a victim's back and hands as the police moved in. A burglary, five masked men coming to a location and threatening violence towards the victims, but nothing was stolen. The motive appears unclear, and it may have been a case of mistaken identity. A ram raid at a Lidl in Cambridgeshire, just over the border, with similar vehicles who'd been seen in Great Barford. Two of the vehicles used had been stolen from nearby, one was left in situ at Lidl, the police were pursuing the other. And a call from ambulance stating that a man had just been assaulted, and there was another man in the background shouting that he was coming to kill him, for officers to attend. That is the reality of what the force control room in Bedford, at Kentstone, is dealing with, coming in as calls from all over the county. And this year, not just in Bedfordshire, but in policing as a whole, there has been an unprecedented demand for service. In Bedfordshire, our nine-nine-nine calls went up eleven percent from May to May, and one-on-ones by sixteen, excuse me. So what about the size of the force? As I said, it matters that we're small, it matters about our funding. Because we are in the lowest quarter for government funding, central funding, the share of the so-called national funding formula distribution, the share among all the forty-three police forces of England and Wales. And we're also in the lowest quarter for council tax, because there are less band D properties here and above that attract the higher rates of council tax than in other councils. That is what I deal with every single day of my working life, and these are the matters that the police deal with every single day of theirs. And I'm very, very happy to answer these questions, I'm very happy to take any of the questions that come up from the floor, as long as we don't allow these people to get off the hook, who deserve to go before the courts. But I'd like to ask the DCC to talk to you now and explain how Bedfordshire Police deploys its resources. Gary Forsyth.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, good evening, everybody, it's, uh, nice to be here tonight, and good to see so many of you, and good to have so many online as well. Um, as introduced, Deputy Chief Constable here in Bedfordshire and the Chief Operating Officer of the, uh, of the organisation. As the chief isn't here tonight, I can tell you that I'm the one that runs it. So, it's, uh, but I hope he's not watching online. Um, I, I think Catherine's nicely set out some of the context that we operate in, in terms of the numbers. Uh, we're actually a much smaller organisation than we were in two thousand and ten, so our budget was thirty-five million pounds bigger than it is now in two thousand and ten. And for an organisation that's made up of around about eighty-five percent of our cost is staff cost, you can work out that we have fewer officers and staff that we had, substantially fewer officers and staff that we had in two thousand and ten. So what that does mean for me and my colleagues is that we have to make some very difficult decisions about where we put our resources. Uh, and I'm going to explain to you, forgive me if I veer off into technical language, I'll try not to, but it is quite a technical and scientific process that we utilise. The fundamental principle that we use in deployment of resources is prevention of harm. So we are looking to protect the vulnerable and prevent harm from happening when it takes place, before it takes place ideally. Uh, and what we must do as well is respond to harm as and when it does happen, as you've heard, some of the incidents that are taking care, taking place on a daily basis. So, the way that we do that is we run something called a Force Tactical Tasking and Coordinating Process, which follows on from a Strategic Tasking and Coordinating Process. So we have a strategic meeting, which takes into account all of the strategies, the, the Police and Crime Plan, in terms of the, the priorities that are set by the Commissioner, the priorities of our partners, the priorities that are coming to us from National Policing, and we will set the strategy from the force, which then feeds into a monthly meeting, which is our Tactical Tasking and Coordinating Meeting. That is informed by a very detailed process of analysis, we have dedicated crime analysts, analysts, who, who perform a range of analysis, looking at crime patterns, crime trends, uh, criminal intelligence, intelligence from other agencies, which gives us the opportunity to determine where the biggest problems are likely to be, based against the threat, harm and risk that we face on a daily basis across the whole of the organisation. Uh, that then sets our tactical priorities, and that will be for a month-long period. Uh, and we will then utilise, we have dedicated resources in the force, and we also have access to other resources from our collaborated functions, so we have specialist collaborated functions with Cambridgeshire and Hertfordshire, who provide things like our armed response capability, our road policing capability, our dog section, and we also have other, um, covert capabilities as well, that we manage as part of a collaboration, on a wider collaboration as well. So all of those things, we can reach into those resources and then deploy them against the threat, harm and risks that we face. That is then supported, because actually, four weeks is a long time, so we don't just do that on a four-weekly basis and then leave it, because a lot can change, and thankfully and hopefully, we do make quite a difference sometimes in short periods of time. So what we do is we have that supported then by two daily tasking and coordinating meetings, who will review the activity of the previous twenty-four hours, and what are the priorities for the next twenty-four hours. And they'll do that on a twelve-hour basis as we run through three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And that can change some of the priorities, so if we've gone somewhere and solved something, or there's an emerging problem somewhere else, then we will take some resource and asset and redeploy that into those particular areas, and that's some of what you've seen happen here. Um, you might be thinking, so where's the space for our voice in all of this then? How can we possibly influence any of that? And, and there is something that we do with that as well. Um, because we have reintroduced community policing, uh, the direction of the Commissioner. Uh, so, community policing had an effect on one of the things that we had retreated from, because we didn't have the resource to do it. Uh, what we now have, we've re-established dedicated community policing officers. We'd like more of them, if I'm honest, and actually, the, the coverage that they have is, you know, limited, because they do have a number of towns that they have to work across and a number of locations. But those are people who are dedicated and ring-fenced to dealing with the local issues that are raised through the engagement that we get at events like this, at the various different engagement events that we run, the surgeries that we run, the online meetings that we run, all of those different things. Those officers will feed those priorities also into the Tactical Tasking and Coordinating Process. So there is an opportunity for local intelligence to influence that deployment as well, but it again, will also be on the basis of threat, harm and risk. And that is generally how the tasking and coordinating process works, it enables us to make the best use of the limited resource that we have on a day-to-day basis. And hopefully, I've done that without any technical language at all.
Yeah, very well.
You would say that, I would.
Yeah, thanks very much, Lee.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, fine, thank you, gentlemen, just introducing who I am, um, thank you very much for that, Catherine and Gary, giving that introduction. My name is Lee Sell, my job here is to ask the questions. Um, I'm not from the police force, I'm not from the council, hence why I'm in jeans and t-shirt. I'm not from the police force, I'm not from the council, hence why I'm in jeans and t-shirt. I live in Shepherd, and I'm just someone who will be answering the questions. So, just want to go through a few house rules, if that's okay for tonight for everyone. We have 1,172 people in four days apply for tickets for this evening. As you can see, this hall will not cater for 1,172 people. So, we have FBL, I've got that right, FBL are very, very kindly streaming this free of charge for us right now. And so, for everyone online, welcome. And from what I see, there's quite a traffic. So that's why I've asked that the questions are sent in either by email, or by phone, or the old-fashioned way, please just write them out on an envelope. If you have an envelope, if you don't, then just put your hand up, if you need an envelope at any time, someone from the back will get you an envelope. When you've written your question, just write it there, put your hand in the air, and one of the guys at the back will bring it to us over here. Over at the side here, we have Molly, who is collecting all the questions as they come in. There's a huge traffic coming in online at the moment, as well as your own questions in the hall. It literally is a great deal. So that's why we're doing it in that way, rather than take the mic out to the hall. I hope everyone understands that and sees the rationale behind it. So, just to make sure everyone's got the introductions, we have Nick over on the far right, we have Gary, we have Catherine, and we have our mayor, Paul. Now, for some of these questions, some of them will be relevant to different members of the panel, and Catherine has kindly provided us with someone from the police service who's actually writing and telling us who's the best person to ask the question to. So that's how it will work. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, I'd like to have it like a question time attitude, if that's okay, because people are watching this online, and we have to finish by nine, and it's 10:02 already. So please, could you be respectful and not shout out? I am aware with question time you get grunts and moans, and I'm not going to prevent you from doing that, but I would ask for the respect and professionalism that please do not shout out or barrack, etc. There is enough police officers here to deal with that if it should happen. Final point, we have got three serving police on this panel, some of them are on call. If for any reason you suddenly see one of them disappear, please, they are not being rude, they are having to deal with a police emergency. Yes? Okay, does that make sense to everyone? Anything I've not addressed, other than to say there are three fire exits in case of emergency, and toilets are through the double doors over there. Yes? And I have a bad cold, so if at any point my voice goes, you can't hear me shout, and I'll start using the PA. Sorry, I should have told you that earlier, Catherine. Okay. Oh, and sorry, one final question, a lot of people have texted saying, where is Nadine Doris? Nadine's office informed me a couple of weeks ago she was coming, I have not heard any further representation from the office. I am told she was on Big Brother's little show last night. I can't give comment, she's not here and I don't know where she is. Okay, so the first one is for Nick. Nick, and excuse me, fasten anything wrong as we go along, do correct me. Have section 35 dispersal orders been considered? Quick and easy way to disperse these groups, and they can last for up to 48 hours. And that is from Tara Adams, who is online. Hello, Tara.
Good evening. Yes, we have used section 34 and then the section 35 dispersal orders. We've used two already. Basically, the order goes in from an inspector, defines an area where people are to be removed from, should they be causing antisocial behaviour. They were put in place, one just after the charter fair, and then another one that I put in place myself a little bit after that. It gives us the power to move people away before they cause problems. And part of the operation that we've had, that has run under the name OpLeth, and you'll hear me refer to, that's the additional policing that's been put in, that's come from December and through, and is still running now. Has the section 35 all lined up, ready to go, with all the grounds that are needed? So whether I'm on duty or not, the on-duty inspector can just take up that order, there's a map on there, and it includes all the information that we need. So yes, we have used it, and we'll continue to use it as is appropriate.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next one is from Dave, he's by texting the hall. I feel terrible saying Dave by texting the hall, it's a bit like a psychic, saying, is there a mark? You're an idiot, isn't it? So, Dave by texting the hall, this is for you, Catherine. Although you may need to refer to Nick. Can the PCC give an update on the community police hubs that were promised by the end of 2016? I understand one was planned for Shepherd.
I can certainly update you on the community hubs, and indeed the recruitment that has supported them. As you know, I don't do this job politically, as I've said. One of the things was incredibly important to me, when I had seen my predecessor, who wanted to raise your council tax by 15.84% to produce 100 officers, was to see how much money we could get from our original budget and free up for the frontline, which is why there are 96 new police officers that were recruited in my first year, and there will be 100 more that are recruited in this financial year. And the vast majority of those are coming into the so-called community hubs, which are not locations, in fact, they are groups of officers. So they are PCs, also backed by PCSOs, they report to sergeants who are also within the hubs and inspectors, under the control of a superintendent. And in addition to them, there is a rural crime team, there wasn't a single rural crime officer when I started as your PCC. We now have the largest rural crime team in the whole seven force area of the east of England to deal with very specific rural crimes. So, the community hubs, we had promised the police watchdog HMIC, and also our partners and the local authorities, that they would be fully staffed by April of 2018. We have all the staff we require already, ahead of schedule, but because so many of them were recruited in as new PCs, and obviously they have to go through their training and mentoring process, some of them are not exactly in the right spot. The hub which covers this particular area is based in Biggleswade and not in Shepherd. I had had an aspiration actually to use your fire station here, because I think if you pay for public buildings already, and there's room, why don't we use them for policing if that's what works? And in fact, in other parts of the county, those of you who read the newspapers and watch regional television will know, that's exactly what I've supported the force to do. So in Leyton Buzzard, and in Amptill, and at Berry Park in Luton, all their fire stations are being used. But in Shepherd and Sandy, they prove to be too small to actually provide availability for both the police and the fire service. So that is why you don't have a hub that's based out of Shepherd. But you do have officers that specifically cover this area, and I think that at this point, it would be a good idea to get Nick to confirm that I am not a lying politician, what he has available to him, where it's based, and what actually is dedicated to this area, because I can see an individual who's responsible for working in this area from where I'm sitting. Nick?
There'll be a bit of a clue for me there, won't there?
No pressure.
No. Our policing hubs for Shepherd are based at Biggleswade, but with another hub at Amptill, where we do work out the fire station. Sally Bonham's at Far End, some of you will recognise her, I'm sure, from patrol that she's done within Shepherd and other meetings that she's been to. She bases at Biggleswade, we've also got a hub up at Risley. We concentrate on Shepherd through the Biggleswade hub, but realistically, the chief has said quite clearly that community police officers and our PCSO teams have dedicated geographical area, and so for here, you're along with Sandy and also with Biggleswade. We've got more in this particular area, because there's more going on here than in any of the other six areas. So concentrating on that work, they have a understanding of what's going on with local people, meeting with the representatives, of course, but the priority setting that works just for your area here bases out of Biggleswade. I'd prefer to see them walking on the streets here and using, yes, the hubs at Biggleswade, but on foot they get an opportunity to talk to people, pick up the local intelligence. I'd rather see them meeting you in Morrison's or walking on the street in Shepherd than I would actually sat at the hubs. That's where they base from, but their work is out on the streets.
Thank you very much for that, Nick. Okay, I've got two questions here, I'm going to read them together. Lesley and Garrett, who are in the hall? Are you here? No? Okay. We thank the police for their presence in tackling some of the antisocial behaviour over the last month or so. We really hope this focus continues. And then someone asks, currently the police vans in the High Street are providing a deterrent. This is clearly unsustainable. What are the long-term plans? And that's to you, Nick.
Yeah, we're mindful that there's a much bigger, high visible presence than there has been for some period of time in Shepherd. And the reassurance of that given to you, people have come and approached me at a number of times to say how much better they feel that there's a number of police officers there. But realistically, it isn't going to be sustainable long-term. So it's dealing with the individuals that have been responsible for, in a group of youngsters, and you're aware of them, and you'll be mindful that I can't go into specifics for operational issues as well as protecting them, and the investigation not being disrupted by giving details out. But as far as the work that's concerned long-term, yes, the visible presence does deter them to some degree, but realistically, it's the long-term problem solving that we put in place with regard to court processes, notices and orders that are put against them. We have a community protection notices that are given by way of a warning, then a notice, and then potentially an order. There's also work that happens with their partners, so there is implications from their behaviour that may well result in them losing their housing association properties, and so the impact on the families that gets the pressure onto some of these individuals. We've looked, and quite often with groups of youths, we see different involvements at different levels, shall we say, some that are more involved directly, are principal offenders, some that are hanging on and taking a lead from those principal people, and then there's others just showing a bit of an interest. And it's important, as in all policing, we make a proportionate response to them. And sometimes that's the case for the hangers-on, to just make sure that their parents or their families are aware that might be taking someone back home and saying, look, there is a serious issue with regard to youths congregating in Shepherd, and your son or daughter has been involved, they're on the periphery of it at the moment, we don't want that going any further. Make sure that you are doing all that you can to protect them from being involved. For those that are involved on the edges of it, these are the implications. If you find yourself with a criminal record, that may well have an impact on your future. It may well have an impact on your family's home and the way that the rest of your family live their lives. But for those that are at the core of the problem, you can rest assured that the strongest enforcement where possible is taken against them, yes, we are supportive, yes, we work with our partners in the council and youth services to make sure these people, who are sometimes vulnerable themselves, get the support they need. But equally, these individuals know that the focus is on them. All the officers that are out there are briefed accordingly with regard to names, the status where there might be with regard to any prosecution that's ongoing, and the notices and conditions that these people are under. Central beds have given us additional CCTV in Shepherd, so that helps us with identification. The work that we've done around, we've had some drugs warrants that we've carried out by Authorise a little while ago, we carried out the warrants, and then we put closure notices on locations that were becoming a source of the antisocial behaviour. Whitworth Court, for example, was one of the closure notices there, because people were congregating there, and so that was a source of the antisocial behaviour. So we've had that premises closed down. On top of that, there's also, you do see high visibility police officers out there doing their patrols, but there's also other work that's going on, where officers perhaps not in uniform are carrying out work in Shepherd. I won't go into further detail on that, but rest assured, it's not just the ones that you see out on the street, there's others as well.
Can I just add to that as well? Because that's a really comprehensive response from Nick. From my perspective and policing in general's perspective, it probably slaughters something of an old phrase, but bear with me while I go with it, because we do recognise 10 pence worth of prevention is far better than 10 pounds worth of response. So by taking preemptive action, and that is the main purpose of the community hubs that we've put in place, so all of our officers in the community hubs, the police officers and the PCSOs, have bespoke problem-solving training, and they have all of the relationships and infrastructure with the partners that enables us to preempt the activity and stop it from happening in the first place. That's very much where our focus is, and that is the long-term sustainable, attainable goal that we seek to achieve. And the response will always be there, but we'd rather that we actually prevent it before it happens in the first instance.
If I could add to that, you've seen for yourselves that when there is a real need, the police can surge in and deal with it, and that's exactly what's happened. Before I came in here tonight, I spent half an hour driving round Shepherd to see if I could find anyone hanging around or anyone causing a problem, and there was nobody out on the streets. Now, you know that there's been a huge presence here, to such an extent, incidentally, the Chief Constable told me that he decided to pop down here entirely unannounced. He has been down here to meet with Mayor Mackin several times to discuss this problem, and to explain how the police are getting on top of it, and exactly who is going before the courts as a result. But he came down unannounced, and he found two vans of police officers that were just off the High Street, officers who were patrolling up and down the High Street, and the crime prevention team in Morrison's. And he'd just been from Downing Street, and he said there were more police in Shepherd on the High Street than there were in Downing Street, where he'd been. Now, believe me, believe you me, if I could provide that to you in every single community in Bedfordshire, every single day of the week, I would. I am the granddaughter of a chief inspector, and I grew up in times when policing was completely different. And for example, so long ago, when I was a tiny child in Surrey, there was a police box that looked like a TARDIS that was on the corner of the street where I lived. We then moved to Northumberland for a while, there was a police officer in a police house in every single village. But policing has changed, and actually, I just wonder if Gary, as the Deputy Chief Constable, might like to talk to that, because we have to invest in everything, from looking after you on the streets here, to actually where you're more vulnerable to be the victim of crime over the next five years, which is from behind a computer terminal, and Bedfordshire Police has invested 1.1 million pounds in the cyber hub.
I was going to try and squeeze it into another one, but given the opportunity, I'll talk briefly about that now. The crime that we have to respond to and deal with now has changed massively over the past five years, and we project it will change massively again over the next five and 10 years as well. So, back in the day, when you might have sat in your lounge, and if you had been lucky enough, let's assume it was a fairly light evening, and you managed to see a police officer perhaps walking past your front door, and you might have felt reassured that you're not going to be subject of a burglary, or that your car's not going to be broken into on your drive, and that's great, and that's still a part of what we do, and that we recognise that visibility has a real place to play in terms of public confidence, but actually it has very little place to play in terms of prevention and deterrent of crime and apprehension of offenders. By contrast, if you saw that police officer, you might feel reassured by their presence. I'll just, a couple of things, I hope I'm right on these, Nick will tell me if I'm wrong. I think last year in Shepherd, there were 19 burglaries of houses in Shepherd. So I'll just ask for a little bit of audience participation now in the room, and please don't feel compelled to put your hand up, but in terms of, everybody's online, we've got over 1,000 people online tonight, and this illustrates the point, there's 100 odd people, 175 people here, but over 1,000 people online. How many people in this room have been subject of an attempted phishing attack on their email and done nothing about it?
From the banks.
Yeah, and I suspect it's almost all of you, and you may not be aware of it. But actually, crime is moving online, crime is very, very different, we have to have a different approach to deal with that, because a uniform presence on the street does nothing to prevent and deter that, and actually, people are losing, people like you, sat in this room now, are losing thousands of pounds as a result of that sort of criminality on a daily basis across the whole force area. So, crime is very definitely changing, but you might be sat there feeling reassured by the Bobby that walked past, and you see them outside your window. At that time, somebody could well be hacking into your bank details whilst they're also grooming your daughter upstairs as she's on an online chat forum. So that's the type of criminality. We have people travelling across the country as a result of online activity to abuse children in Bedfordshire, every week. So that's the sort of criminality that we have to deal with.
You'll be pleased to know they're picking them up at the airports as a result.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Okay. One for you, Catherine. This is a text from in the hall, Dave again. Have you got more than one Dave here tonight? Or is it just every question's come through as Dave? It seems to me that way. Can I just say, we're getting an awful lot of questions, sorry, I'll stand up, we're getting an awful lot of questions through at the moment, and we'll do as many as we can. Some of them, I'm sorry, I can't ask, they're inappropriate, so just so you are aware, they're mainly from online, but if you don't agree with your question, I'm sorry, that could be the reason why. Catherine, the police have had nothing but problems over funding for the past few years, and the Bedfordshire is overstretched. Why are we still hearing the same message?
Right, well, I have fought for 21 months, as I've said, over funding, and what was settled in the police settlement for the next two years before Christmas was funding, or a funding position for all 43 police forces. So no single police force and no single PC PCC had anything different. I have some rather strong views about that, as you might imagine, which is why the policing minister heard from me immediately beforehand, immediately afterwards, and why he's seeing me next week. The problem, as I said, is our share historically of this national part of the funding pie, because it looks from the outside as if Bedfordshire is just a county comprised of small towns and small villages, and you already know that there are crime challenges in small towns and small villages. But when you do have a town that is the size of Luton, which is close to London, very closely connected by rail, and which has all the problems of a London borough, which absorbs 40% of the resources of Bedfordshire Police, that completely skews what otherwise would possibly be a formula that worked. So what's happened? Well, immediately before Christmas, which I was rather unhappy about, because it disappeared in a blizzard of snow and glitter, was that PCCs like me were given the potential to raise £12 a year for the next two years, a pound a month, and that will create the possibility, if I do it, hopefully with the support of this public, of raising 2.988 million pounds more for Bedfordshire Police. But I am mindful, and have spoken to government, to say the last time that the council taxpayers of Bedford were asked, of Bedfordshire, were asked to pay for policing, the fact was that at the ballot box, 70% of them said no. Now, many people, including those I know in this room, like Tony who's talked to me previously, have said that's because a lot of people didn't understand what they were being asked for. They thought that the council tax as a whole would be going up by approximately 16%, not the police share of it.
Catherine, can I please interrupt you for a moment, help you on this?
Yes.
It's just that I've had a lot of questions for what you're about to say.
Right.
So I just think it would be useful to read what people are asking, because I think it directly relates.
Yes.
Four different people so far have texted in, will the PCC urgently run another effort referendum for the public to consider a larger than 2% rise in the council tax for the police? And then I've had three messages from that saying they didn't understand the previous 2%.
Last time.
It would be useful.
Right, fine. Right, I don't need to, because the fact is that the government has said that I can raise the £12 a year without a referendum, but every single person in this room can help me to do it with some legitimacy, because I'll tell you what I'm going to spend it on in a minute, if you do back me with it, but at the end of the day, the buck stops with me. So the buck stops with me, and I will take the decision, but I'd much rather do so with your backing. So there is right now a survey asking you for your support or otherwise to a pound a month, coming from band D houses, less from people who live in less expensive houses, to policing to produce the 2.98 million. So if you were to go to bedfordshire.pcc-police.uk, you can back me in that, and I would like to ask everyone in this room who presumably wants to back policing to do that, because this is what I'm doing with it. I have been given the leeway for two years to raise that money, you will work out that obviously if I recruit police officers, their salaries go on for longer than that. But the policing minister promised me, and he promised the MP for South West Beds in the House of Commons, that in two years' time, they are going to look as part of the next spending review at completely revising Bedfordshire Police's share of the funding formula. I'm not really terribly interested in JAM tomorrow, but I am interested in calling them out. I am going to recruit between 110 and 130 police officers for visible community policing in Bedfordshire, and an improvement to our 999 response service, and in two years' time, given that promise, let them pick up the tab.
Can you just give the address?
Certainly, bedfordshire.pcc-police.uk, bedfordshire.pcc-police.uk, because at the beginning of next month, I have to go to my police and crime panel, who hold me to account, and I want to be able to say that a significant number of people in Bedfordshire backed me with doing precisely that.
We'll put that address on the Alshepherd link.
Thank you.
And for everyone here tonight, I know streaming, you will receive that, we'll make sure that's done in 24 hours, okay. Nick, you've been quiet for a while, so we'll come over to you. Nick, do we have an antisocial behaviour officer? And that's from Tara, hello Tara, who's online?
Yes, we have got, we've got priority ASB or partnership ASB officers specifically for the north and the south of the county. We have two officers, so that we cover all, every day that needs covering. They review antisocial behaviour incidents they come in, and then we make sure that the appropriate support is given out, whether that is a visit, telephone call, and they make an assessment, again, based on threat, harm and risk, brief circumstances, whether it's something that's been dealt with already by way of long term problem solving, or if it's something that needs by way of a referral, or maybe it's just a visit with regard to a PCSO, so they can just take a little bit more information on board. It's all very well sometimes reading the narrative of a report, the best way is actually talking to someone face to face. So yes, we have got priority specific PASB officers.
That's good, thank you very much. Gary, why do we keep being told that kids in this area under the age of 16 cannot be held responsible for their actions?
I don't know why anybody's telling you that, actually, so the age of criminal responsibility in this country is 10, below that they're deemed to be Doli Inca Pacts, which is Latin, that's the extent of my Latin, but I can remember it from my training days, but 10 years old is the threshold in this country for the age of criminal responsibility. Over and above that, they are subject to the full force of the law in any way, in the same way that anybody else in the room would be. So if you are being told that by anybody, it's incorrect, and we will deal with people, and we have a number of cases in play at the moment involving people under the age of 16, so.
The only thing that might relevant to that, a community protection notice can't be given to someone who's under 16, so that particular part of ASB legislation can't be used for juvenile, but certainly from 10 upwards.
Could I possibly ask you, Nick, to explain to everybody, a community protection notice and order, and what they mean, because a lot of people ask me questions, people come in about ASBOs, and they obviously don't exist anymore.
No, the ASBO effectively has been replaced by the Criminal Behaviour Order, and that follows a conviction or a rather criminal offence. The community protection notices with, from 2014, there's a big change and a simplification around ASB legislation, but effectively, it's around a persistent cause for concern around individuals or issues in a particular area, and it's about raising exactly expectations around what is acceptable and unacceptable behaviour, and it's an escalating scale, so it works from, we start off with a CVW, Community Protection Warning, this behaviour that you've been involved in, unacceptable, and it's signed by the perpetrator and/or their parents if necessary, that moves on, if they then can complete the same sort of behaviour again, then that goes on to a protection notice, and ultimately, it can then go on to an order, which is sent to the court, and they make a decision with regard to conditions that then would sit against that individual, and a breach of that would then go back to the court.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Gary, back to you. This is from Danny, who I believe is in the hall. Danny says, would it not be better to reduce PCSOs and spend the money on warranted constables?
Well, that's a question, and I know some people in the room might recognise that that's something Norfolk have looked at at the moment. From our perspective, we do think that PCSOs gives us a real good balance of powers and a balance of effect, so you don't need to have warranted powers to do everything that we want to do around community policing. So a lot of it is very visible reassurance, and actually, the engagement that we need to do, and police officers do cost more money ultimately than PCSOs, so it's not an equivalence. So from our perspective, we want to have a mixed economy approach to doing that, and make sure, because we've got limited resource, that we are utilising the warranted powers where we need warranted powers, and then we've got other means of achieving the community engagement and reassurance and high visibility with the appropriate level of powers that they need, but not fully warranted as police officers are. So we could do that, but actually, from our perspective, the community policing part is a really, really important foundation stone for us, and to do it purely with police constables would be quite an expensive model and quite an expensive means of us achieving that. So actually, from our perspective, we are absolutely committed at this time to continuing with PCSOs and not just all police officers.
I could perhaps just to add a little bit on to that, my team is made up of a third PCs and two thirds PCSOs. It is a completely different role, and I was perhaps one of those that was a little sceptical when first PCSOs came to us, now that I can absolutely assure you they are invaluable. Apart from anything else, talking about money is beyond my pay scale. However, I do see the interaction of the PCSOs with the community, they are treated differently, certainly by some people with regard to people being unwilling to talk to a police officer, but are happy to build a relationship with a PCSO, who they seem to be slightly different. They get the continuity, we've got PCSOs that have been in place certainly in this area now, some of you know Jill and Anne, who know exactly what's going on in Shepherd, they see the problems before they're starting, they're talking to the right people, they are getting that information that a police officer perhaps just wouldn't be able to get, that intelligence that they're able to submit, which they submit in the same way as a police officer will submit, is what helps us fill in the pieces of the jigsaw around the warrants that we look to get with regard to drugs, as come through information, principally the two closure notices, a huge amount of that intelligence came through our PCSO team out on the ground, and it's stuff that perhaps police officers just wouldn't be able to get. I couldn't be a greater advocate than I am now of the PCSO role, and how hard our PCSOs are working day to day.
Thank you very much, okay. Catherine, back to you, my phrase, apologies, so I've got a couple of questions here relating to the discussion on council tax and the potential extra. So first one is from Linda, Linda Harrington, who is in the hall, representing the Clifton Residents Association, and she asks, if we all agree to pay in the extra council tax to fund, further fund the police, will it be ring fenced till it does not go elsewhere?
Well, I've just told you what I want to spend it on, and I'm not going to move from that, because I think that's your democratic right, if you're putting your hands in your pocket to pay, you need to get something which is visible and palatable for it, not for it just to disappear into the general pot. So as I said, 2.988 million is how much I could raise. I will share with you that I was disappointed with that, because I supplied a report to the Home Office, which fully evidenced the need for 10 million a year to fund 300 police officers on the frontline and 80 detectives. So you'll see that some of the money needs to go to our existing spending, there's a new computer system coming in, for example, that will link together Cambridgeshire, Hertfordshire and Bedfordshire, and indeed with forces across the east, as you would wish, because you would want that if there was a criminal who starts off their activity in one part of the region and passes into this particular county, that we can trace that right the way through and work together. But as I said, 110 to 130, I've asked our chief finance officer to effectively ring fence it, because that's what I intend to do with it. My number one priority of the police and crime plan is more visible community policing in Bedfordshire, that's what you've started to get, and you'll get more of it.
Thank you very much. Just to continue on that Catherine, why is the increase in council tax for the police linked to the band of the house? For example, why not just simply one pound for all homes?
Well, to me, a pound doesn't seem like a great deal of money, I am prepared to believe that there are people for whom a pound is a lot of money every month. However, it is what it is, it is linked to the banding of a house, and that means that if you're below bandy, as our councillor sitting here will know from central Bedfordshire, if your house is below bandy, you won't even pay a pound. If it's bandy and above, you'll pay above. I don't have the right to actually go for more without running a referendum, and that referendum was publicly acknowledged to have cost 600,000, and my office now tell me that if you take into account the legal fees and all of the work of the office team, it costs closer to a million. I am not going to blow a million pounds of your money, not again.
Thank you very much, okay. Gary, what percentage of the new policing will we get in central beds, rather than it going to Luton Borough or Bedford Borough?
Can I have one on sport? So we've done, and you won't be surprised to hear me tell you that we've done a detailed analysis of our demand, so if we are successful in attaining the council tax preset the commissioner has spoken about, then we have plans as to where we would like to deploy those resources against our threatened risk and what our growth areas are likely to be. Within that, we also have to listen to the commissioner's desire as well, because she provides us with the money, albeit we are the ones that will make the decisions around where resources go. But, and I don't actually work for the commissioner, I work for the chief constable, and the chief constable does work for the commissioner, but collectively, we will decide as a team how those resources are allocated. And a proportion of them will be allocated to central functions that work across the county, in terms of increasing our cyber capability, increasing our ability to tackle domestic abuse, a proportion of them we will look at, augmenting our community policing, but actually, we haven't broken it down in terms of a percentage we allocate here in this locality, in terms of in that locality. We tend to operate in most occasions in terms of high harm and threat pieces on a force wide basis, so you've already heard the commissioner say around about 40% of our resource is in Luton, so you don't need to be a mathematician to work out 60% of it is outside of there, and then there's a reasonable distribution across all of the policing areas that we do. Sorry, I can't give a precise figure at this stage.
Okay, thank you for that. Gary, sorry, Nick, you've been quiet for a little while, so we'll come to you. Shepherd has been a focus for gangs from Luton and various other parts. Many times in the past, but people seem to have forgotten that, I'm not paying attention to dispersing in these groups at particular antisocial times such as weekends, evenings. Have you considered a street watch programme?
Yeah, we have a strong street watch that sits across the mid-county area, and I would say to the people that are in the hall and that are listening online, with regard to involving themselves, community policing for me is around working with our communities, and that involvement with the neighbourhood watch organisation, I'll make sure that details go forward, I would encourage people to join it, because everybody says we want to get something done, but that involvement, if they're in a position to assist by involving themselves, is important to us. That's the neighbourhood watch and the speed watch, if it's raised through our priority setting, which we have at a local level with your councillors, so that you identify what's important to us, a lot of that work goes out to that watch scheme. So yeah, it is something that happens, but we're always keen to see more people working, and that includes the special constabulary, who also have done quite a bit of work here in Shepherd, and the volunteers in all sorts of sectors that work with the police.
Thank you very much, okay. Nick, whilst we're with you, what's the CCTV situation in the town at the moment, and how is it monitored?
It is increased. If I tell you where the cameras are...
Yes, exactly.
That wouldn't help you, and it wouldn't help me particularly. What I will say is that with regard to the identification of the youths that were involved principally with the issues that are here, our CCTV operators are in a position, they know who we are principally looking at, we're not necessarily targeting individuals, but let us make it completely clear that we know who we are concentrating our efforts upon and what they look like. But I won't tell you where they are, but there was an extra, that we bid at our tasking meeting through central beds, we have permanent cameras that are deployed all the while, but also there's temporary cameras that are brought in, and we've got this, and some of those are coming from businesses as well, and sometimes from private individuals' homes.
Okay, thank you very much, Nick. We've got about half an hour left, I'm keen to get through as many questions as possible. There's a lot of questions coming through relating to new housing, so I'm just putting those together the best that I can. If you have got a question you've not put in as yet, please, could you send it literally in the next 10 minutes, because we've only got 30 minutes left? For those of you online, I'll give you a pause, and I'm going to say the number for safety, 07864685930, text is the best way, but you can use the email. Catherine, I've got a lot of questions for you. If there is so much terrorist activity and organised crime spilling out of London into Bedfordshire, why is the funding not being met accordingly? And that's from Andy in the hall.
Well, Andy in the hall, you asked that, and I've asked that, and I've done it in person, I've done it in public, I've done it in private behind closed doors, I've done it at Kenson HQ, I even stopped the Home Secretary and the ladies, which has made me absolutely notorious, in fact, within the Home Office. I have spelt out the issues, but policing as a whole, not just in Bedfordshire, this year in particular, you can't have missed the news stories, the demand has gone up right the way across policing. But I am not just giving up, because as part of the announcements of the policing settlement at the end of December, they announced that there were two other pots of money that you might have noticed, 50 million more for counter-terror policing, and... might have noticed, 50 million more for counter terror policing and 93 million in the so-called special policing grant, a special policing fund. Now, one of the things that I am pressing the policing minister over is whether some of that CT money, some of that counter terror money should actually be used, funded from the centre for more community officers in Luton in order to release the pressure out for us to have officers, more officers elsewhere in central Bedfordshire and north Bedfordshire. That to me makes sense if you know you have a problem in a particular area. So that is one of the things that I've approached over. And I've also approached Ben Wallace, the security minister, and we have a bid in for meetings with him as well. Also, around this special fund, the 93 million pound fund is supposed to be there, it's very loosely defined in fact, but it's a contingency fund for after emergencies for things like Manchester. I've already stated unequivocally that surely the better thing is to get upstream and invest before something happens. And therefore, could we have a look at some of that fund coming to Bedfordshire? So I'm not somebody who just gives up. You know, I've come from a National New Tabloid background in the past, I'm like a terrier once I get on to it. But what I can't do is I cannot break into the Exchequer and walk out with a sack of cash for Bedfordshire Police. God knows if I could, I would. But I will, I continue to make the argument, but once we have had those meetings, this is set for the next two years. And I am not sitting here for two years whinging about a lack of funding. We have to get on with what we've got and do the best and recruit the maximum number of police officers. And that's what I genuinely believe you want me to do. I'm seeing nodding heads, thank heavens.
Thank you, Catherine, okay. I've literally got, I mean, eight, nine, perhaps 10 questions about new housing. There's quite a theme here, so I'm going to go through the best that I can. Paul, I'm going to pick on you if you don't mind, is that right?
Yeah, no problem.
It's just, I think this particular question you might want to have some input into and then I'll open it to, I think probably Nick might be most relevant. This is from Chris. Housing development with zero increase in infrastructure, jobs etc., cutback in bus services is not helping the situation. For young people, there's still not enough support from the town and county councils. Things like the skate park, what is the latest in all of this?
Yeah, new housing is a problem that we face in town council and I know colleagues in central beds council face on a regular weekly basis. There is a great big government push to build more housing, they're encouraging developers to pick up every scrap of land. And in fact, I was just having a quick scan through the latest of Bedfordshire's local plan and we've got a proposed allocation of a bunch more houses on the edge of town. Not quite as much as I thought we were going to get, but we're going to get some. It's going to continue on, it's not going to stop. We can't stop it and I don't think our friends in central beds can stop it because the developers simply go to the government and the government say, yeah, go ahead and build them then. What we don't get and what ward councillors and what we fight for is the infrastructure to back it up, like the youth activities and so on. First of all, the skate park, in fact, I emailed to Bovis two days ago, where are we with the skate park? Which should be built up on the Ample Road site and it should be open later this summer. Bovis have been stalling because they haven't built enough houses yet and all the usual sort of reasons that they come out with and I'm not going to let them get away with it because it's already a year late. It is however, going to be quite a nice skate park as far as skate parks go. I have a councillor that's dedicated to looking into that and he's also in contact with skaters, some of them younger ones, some of them older ones, and we want them to form a confederation that will actually do the day to day management of it. So that's rolling along. The ordinary youth programme, we do do quite a lot for young people in Shepherd, as well as the non-council funded bits, if you like, you've got the scouts and the brownies and you've got all of those groups, you've got the football clubs, all these different sort of things. We run, what happened was, we got funding from central beds because we felt their youth provision to us was not really suitable. You know, a football game in Alsey is not what the kids in Shepherd want. And we had some quite strong conversations and we managed to get funding two years ago to match our funding to employ contractors, which is Arrogant Homes through their youth employer, Youth Officers Service and Nicola King, who is one of our town councillors, who is responsible for young people. And they provide youth activities in the Hive, which is a local unit round here, which is where kids go in and do the different activities. She does running groups, she does activity groups, she does masses of things. Go onto Shepherd website, click on to the youth activities page and you'll see how much we do. Last year, central beds increased their funding to 10,000 pounds, which was very nice, thank you very much. And I've just asked central beds for the same this year. The model that we're running in Shepherd with the youth activities group is being picked up widely by other towns. Alsey, I know for example, are trying to set up a similar scheme where instead of using central beds youth activity people, they take the money away from central beds and put it into a local group. And that way they can provide stuff for the kids and young people in that town. And that's where we felt it was falling down before, it was too general. So we do do put a lot of activities on for young people. The stumbling point is, what are you going to do for young people? And I get people come up to me and say, there's nothing for kids to do in Shepherd. I say, well, what are you going to do then? What ideas have you got? Come and tell me what you want to put on for kids in Shepherd and we'll look at funding it for you. That's what I need, I need people to come forward and help us run these things. I've got a councillor of 15 people here, town councillors, they have plenty of other things to do as well. So I want people that will come forward and help us to run these things. Very much with the policing issues, if you don't tell them, they don't know about it. So you tell them what's going on, but I want you to come and help me as well. So it's a two-way thing here. There is a lot of stuff, there is a lot of scope that we can do. We can use increased numbers of visits to this Hive, which I don't know if any of you have seen the Hive round in industrial area, it's an indoor play area. So regardless of whether outside, the kids can go inside and they've got sliding tubes and all sorts of stuff. So it's really, really good. We've got a gym in town that we can get access to. We've got this facility here at the Shepherd Town and Wall Association, which they run an alcohol free bar for the young people and they come in and we pay the membership for the young people and they've got snooker and whatever else in there. All this is apart from the other groups that are, you know, set up and standard groups within any community, cadets and so on. We'd like to have some police cadets as well, but...
Some here tonight, aren't they?
Yeah, we used to have five cadets, we could certainly do with police cadets as well.
Can I just add to that briefly as well? So many years ago, when I was a young inspector, very similar to Nick, I was interviewed for a national...
Steady.
Okay, a few years ago. I was interviewed for a national promotion process and I was interviewed by two very formidable people in policing, one called Pauline Clare and another called Roger Baker, who were chief constables at the time, it's quite a scary interview. Their first question to me on interview was, make an argument to me for more, imagine I'm the Chancellor of the Exchequer, make an argument to me for more resources for policing at the cost of transport, health and education. And my response to them was, I'm not sure I'd really want to do that. Because if I do that and you give me more resources, you're going to have a greater expectation of what I can deliver for you. If you take that from health, education and transport, you're going to be diminishing people's opportunity to enrich their lives, entertain themselves, travel to other places and you're going to be creating bigger problems for me and you're going to have a greater expectation of me being able to deal with them. So actually, whilst I want more money for policing, now I thought that's a fairly basic answer actually, but it seems to be something that we struggled with across the country over a number of years because we are seeing huge development of housing and what, we are in what Lord Adonis calls the Oxford Cambridge Ark here. And if you project ahead over the next 20 years, we will see massive development in this locality. Now, what you can't do is do that without the appropriate infrastructure, you do create problems for social and demographic and policing problems in effect. So there has to be the appropriate consideration at all the planning stages, we have to make sure we're influencing those debates. One of the things that I've done since I've arrived is try to bring together all of our partners, so you won't be surprised to learn with you that we focus very much on understanding our current demand. We also work very hard to try and understand what our future demand looks like. And we can do quite a bit with that actually, because health have a lot of modelling, we can understand what an aging population looks like, what that means for us in terms of how often we have to respond to break doors down, which the fire service do now for us if the ambulance service needs access. But actually, how many more people go missing as a result of dementia that has a big impact on us in terms of our ability to respond. So we have to project forward and understand our future demand. And what I've been doing since I've arrived is I'm trying to bring our partners together so we can collectively understand each other's demand and then we're making decisions on a whole scale basis, a system wide basis. So if the council does something, it doesn't have an adverse impact on us. And if we do something, it doesn't have an adverse impact on them. And actually, by doing that together, we can make much better use of our resources, we can understand the future demand and we can start to influence the debates around infrastructure and housing and the things that we require to be able to provide the service to the growth in population that we know will happen.
Could I very briefly, if I may, Lee, add a comment? Many of you might not know that housing policy now means that you can't just build a group of, you know, family bedroom, three or four bedroom houses in one place. If you're going to have a new development, you have to have an element of social housing in there as well. So I don't know which genius thought up that they could bring individuals who may be very short of money and have other problems and put them a few feet away from people with 50 inch televisions, but that is the reality, you know. So I am of course, as a PCC, able to get more council tax if you have more building, but you're building in such a way that there are potential problems that come into brand new estates as well. And you have to take that into account, as you heard from my colleagues, the infrastructure. It's why some of the central Bedfordshire councillors, in fact, one just in the last two days, has been in touch with me with an email which has also gone to Gary, saying, what are the police saying about the fact that in the next three years, there'll be 15,000 more residents, or homes, 50, up to 50,000 more residents in central Bedfordshire with all that attendant extra demand? And Gary's right on it.
Thank you. But we're getting very short of time now, so I am going to start being a little bit Jeremy Paxton if need be. So Gary, do the police have any input for housing development and the type of housing? This might have been already asked, but I want to just clarify.
On the type of housing, we tend, well, they're secured by design schemes and we have architectural liaison officers that input into large scale housing design schemes. So we look to design out crime, but it isn't universal, to be fair, it's a bit hidden this. I'm trying to keep it short for you.
I appreciate that. Keep going like that, I will get to you on small questions. Nick, how does Bed Poll and the PCC plan to increase the proactive and responsive police presence in Shepherd and the surrounding community to reflect the increase in population growth and housing development on a sustained and continuous basis?
That's a tough one for you, Nick, isn't it? I mean, that's kind of all of the previous that we've spoken about, to be fair.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure it was covered.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully we have, I think we have.
Apologies, I'm not always listening to you because we're meeting at the same time.
I'm used to it.
You must be a real presenter.
Absolutely, absolutely, this is my day job. Okay. Nick, are police officers around Shepherd during the night at the moment?
Yes, there's always 24 hour policing here with the response team that will be going through the area, will be specifically at Shepherd at the moment under op Leith and it isn't just the officers that are on overtime with Leith and/or our community police officers that concentrate on the area day to day as geographic, but joint protective services with the half of year in Cambridgeshire, so we've got armed response teams, traffic officers. And so there is, yes, always 24 hour coverage.
Fantastic, okay. Nick, going to come to you again. Long question, I'm afraid. What percentage has the crime rate gone up in Shepherd in the last five years? We're always treated with respect as young adults and move on if we are in groups of more than three, as we are apparently seen as menacing. Not all of our crime is committed by young adults. Surely focusing on these gangs alone, we are creating our own fear of walking down our own streets? And that's from Rachel, who is in the hall.
Okay, my apologies, I don't know the percentage increase for the last five years, but I can find out and make sure that you get that information.
So crime across Bedfordshire is up about 12% at the moment on this time last year. That's part of a national trend. Some of that is a genuine increase, some of it is attributable to changing recording practices and greater compliance with what the government's put in place around crime recording standards. But crime over the past five years, it's fair to say, has risen.
And some of the crime report or reporting of crime will be due to you reporting things. I've been banging on for some years about, tell the police what's going on. If you don't tell them, they don't know. And I think that's caused a little bit of a hit or a little bit of a ripple in our reported crime, particularly antisocial, of course.
And of course, there are things that people are much more likely to come forward and report to police now than they were in the past. I'm very proud of the fact that people are more likely to come forward and report both rape and historic child abuse to police now than they were years ago because they know that they're going to be taken seriously.
Thank you.
Just so, with regard to treating groups of youths and the intimidation and the concerns that the community have raised around that, I can absolutely assure you that our engagement with those groups, they are treated as individuals and their reaction to the police officers and the PCSOs when they speak to them, one set of behaviour starts another set of behaviour. So decent interaction with them, building up that relationship with the PCs and the PCSOs has meant we give a proportional reaction so that those people that I've talked about being on the hangers-on or just seeing as a bit of interest of what these nuisance youths are up to, we make sure that we deal with people fairly. It's something that comes from the chief downers, firm and fair is absolutely fine. We are a friendly face of policing until you step across a certain line and then you can expect the enforcement and that goes at a proportionate level. It's not so long ago I was running a scout group in Henlow.
I do need to hurry you, so...
Sorry, the point I was going to make is that I was on my way to the scout hut and I was like, well, there's an intimidating group of youths, till I realised actually it was my scouts just waiting to go out for some community service. We don't treat everyone that's wearing a hoodie as being intimidated. I need the people of Shepherd to make sure that they're with us and being, we know that we're dealing with the people that are causing you issues, but those that are out there carrying out their lawful business or just out on the town as youngsters, they aren't necessarily going to get the hard face of policing towards.
Okay, thank you. Gary, are specials being used for community policing? And could you, sorry, take a moment to describe what specials are, please?
Okay, so yes is the quick answer, specials are utilised in both community policing and also response policing and in some of our specialist functions as well. Special constables are volunteers who give up their own time. I started my career in policing as a special constable, absolutely loved it, I'd recommend it. If there's people in the room that want to join, we will be recruiting, but you give up your own time. We try, we like to try and get you to give around about eight to 10 hours a week if you can, so about 40 hours a month. You will go out, you'll be trained as a police officer, you'll be sworn in, you will be a constable, you have warranted powers of a constable. The only difference is that they don't cross the border into other counties, but you have all the same powers as a regular police officer. You'll be deployed in support of police officers. Some of our special constables, when they achieve a level of training, are eligible for what we call independent patrols, so they can patrol on their own. Otherwise, they'll be deployed with our regular police officers and they'll support them in doing that. But a really, really valuable resource for us, we've got around 300 of them here in Bedfordshire and they supplement our policing activity almost every day in everything we do. So they're a brilliant resource, we love them and they are significantly involved in community policing.
Thank you. Gary?
Sorry, Shepherd has identified its local priority being speeding. The specials for us here have got their own training, their own speed gun and they concentrate on Shepherd and this surrounding area, just purely done by the specials which allows our other community officers to do other activities.
We need to keep going on with it, sorry, Nick. Gary, are the police being favoured by the courts?
Well, I don't think they are. I think the courts have, you know, the courts have to buy by legislation. My job is not to make laws or make judgements on laws, my job is to enforce the law. I have an opportunity at the senior level, I'm apt to influence policy through debates I have with politicians, but actually, I'm not going to go into a sentencing debate around courts and everything else. I think courts, as with very many other public servants in very many arenas, have a difficult and challenging job to do within the legislation that sets for them. I know we've got some really dedicated people that work really hard in our court system and our judiciary and magistrates are also working really hard. And actually, we all want the same things. So the public servants that serve this locality want it to be the very safest and the very best place it can be. So, you know, are there difficulties at times with sentences? Yes, of course there are. I'm not going to get into that debate.
Okay, thank you. Catherine, question for you from Steve, I think Steve's going to be one of your best friends now. Catherine, is it possible to overpay the one pound per month charge and make it 50 pounds a year, for example, through a donation so I could purely allocate this to the Shepherd area?
Oh, donations, we like, we'll take money from anyone. You want to cross my palm with silver, I will take money from you. If you wanted to set up, if Mayor Mackin wanted to set up a fund here, so we discussed with policing how it could be spent, I'm never turning any money down from anywhere. And I'll give you a couple of examples of where we've had some fantastic help. You see, it never stops at Bedfordshire Police, the operational churn is ongoing. Luton Bid, the business organisation, and Bedford Bid are both paying for PCSOs, they're directly paying. There is no reason why the people of Sheffield could not finance a PCSO, I will bite your hands off.
We did do that in the early days.
Well, there you go.
Okay, that's something you can take from the meeting to look at. Okay, unfortunately Gary's had to leave, obviously that's a priority and that must take precedence. Some of the questions I've got are very aimed at Gary, so I'm going to ask the questions, and if you two can do the best you can, I would really appreciate it. Catherine, I think this one will probably work for you. This is from Trevor, who says, 'It seems there is conflict between Gary and Catherine over how the additional council tax income would be spent. I think this might be a misunderstanding, that's my words, so I think it's worth just clarifying.'
Yeah, absolutely, there is no conflict over it.
Can I just, sorry, can I just give you the rest of it?
Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
Catherine said, 'Community policing, Gary said money would be allocated where needed.' Trevor's worried that he's a little lacking in confidence on Sheffield seeing the money now.
Okay, well, it's a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirty we need, and that's also to take into account those who retire and leave Bedfordshire Police. I've presided over the frontline increasing by almost ten per cent in two years, and I'll be presiding over it increasing by another ten per cent as well. There is no conflict, I support this police force. My version of holding to account is not to come to meetings like this and tear officers down, and I hope if you ask our officers, irrespective of rank, that you find that they feel they have support from me in all sorts of different ways, up to and including the fact that there's a police officer assaulted every four minutes in the UK, and that is something which I find absolutely appalling for the people who are trying to protect you. So we're on the same side, yes, they will be going into community policing, and yes, they will be going into other areas as required too. As you hear, Bedfordshire Police flexes its resources depending on where the problems are, and goodness knows the people of Sheffield have seen them flex resources into Sheffield to deal with a problem, to snuff it out.
Thank you ever so much, I think this one's going to be for you again, Catherine. Right, I've got here, 'Expect a long answer', so you've got three minutes.
Is this my husband who's read this one by any chance?
Oh yes, what time will we be home? No. On the one pound extra council tax funding at two point eight million being spent on one ten to a hundred and thirty-five officers, this works out as a two-year salary of twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-one. Does this mean that the annual salary of ten thousand seven hundred, sorry, does this mean that their annual salary will be ten thousand seven hundred and forty? Is that what they will be receiving?
No, in actual fact, it's enough to pay for our junior recruits, and it's enough to pay for some of our existing spending plans. I rely on our chief officer to advise me on what the maximum amount of recruitment is on the funding, and remember, that's additional to what I would raise in any case. So there's what I would raise and what additional monies are coming in. It's the whole pot that we look at, of course, the central government pot, the pot of funding that we were expecting, and the additional money that I'll be bringing in. Hope that clarifies that.
Okay. I've had several texts asking about the situation in, putting this very delicately, the arrests that were made in November and December. Now, Catherine has made it very clear that can't be discussed, and I cannot ask those questions, I'm sorry. That is for legal reasons. What I will ask is, this has come through a few times, I think this is okay, and show me down if not, why have police not been seen patrolling the streets in Sheffield as they did in November and early December? And I take it, Nick, that will be to you.
Why have they not been?
That's, I'm reading the question as it's come...
I've almost put the question, I'd be extremely surprised if people haven't seen the huge difference between the visible policing that was happening through the summer and into the autumn, and then from the November-December period, there's been at least four additional officers every day from the eighth of December to account for what they've done, where they've visited, who they've stopped check, what intelligence forms have been put in. They've submitted the forms, so they must be out there doing it. It's possible that if you look out the window and don't see a car, they may have just walked past or they're just about to, but they've certainly been out there, I assure you, and they'll continue to be so.
Thank you. Okay, it's five to nine, so I'm going to make this very quick now. I've had several messages about this evening of how interesting people have found it, and how they would like to have more. Obviously, this is a one-off. I'd just like to read this one in particular, to give you a flavour of what we've been getting through. And this is from Russell, who is in the hall somewhere. And Russell says, 'I found this meeting informative and interesting. The likelihood of doing this and updating on situations and sharing information on a regular basis, three, perhaps four times a year, would be very beneficial. I'm sure all involved would gain more support.' To quote Gary, 'Ten pence spent', etc. I've got a feeling Paul might like to say something on that.
Yes, certainly. The, I mean, this meeting is, we put it in here because this was the largest type of hall that was close to the town centre, and also, it was, I felt that we could keep control of this size crowd quite easily. I think probably it would be an idea that we get our community members to come to the Central Beds office when they run their state-of-the-nation things, you know, and you go along there yourself and present there, and I think that might be a bigger, a better idea, because you'll get a bigger spread of people in there. It means that we've got to somehow get them from here down to Central Beds offices, but I think it'd be worth, even if we've got to put a coat on or something for people who can't drive, you know, just to get them to go and experience that sort of environment, and these sort of problems that other communities are getting, so they know they're not, because, you know, you think you're on your own here, Sheffield's, well, it totally isn't. Mepershire have got the same problem, Clifton have got the same problem, particularly because I've scooped all the officers up, they've sort of, they're noticing it a little bit more, and because we're having this problem, they're paying more attention to it as well. So you'll probably see their crime figures creeping up as people are reporting them. So I think probably a larger meeting on a more general basis would be a good way.
I mean, I would rather have less meetings and more people, so that we reach as many people as possible. And also, I would just urge you two, please take a look at my website and see what's happening on that website. I have my staff here, is Grace at the back? Grace, could you stand up, please? Right, so Grace works for me at the back of the room. If any of you have cards with your email addresses on, or you would like, as you go out, to give your email address to Grace, needless to say, I won't be passing it on to Debenhams or whatever and selling it for cash, I will literally be using it so that you're on our list to get the newsletter every single month, so that you can actually find out what I do. Nick, how do you pass on information about what you're doing in the north, please?
For us, I'd encourage you to sign up on Bedh Alert with regard to, and you can, it's quite specific on the website, that you can sign up for exactly what you want. So if you just want information around theft of mo, or theft of motor vehicles in the Sheffield area, you could be completely specific, or you can open it up so that you get information, crime prevention stuff, detail around operations that happen across the county. So if you would like to sign up to that, we'd be more than happy to talk to you and show you how to do that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start drawing matters to close. Just one thing, from what you said, Paul, about other areas, as you were saying that, literally, I've had two text messages, one from Clift, sorry, not Clift, sorry, one from Aylesley, one from People's Way, saying they're watching this online, and they've very, very much enjoyed it, and would love the chance themselves of something similar. I'll just pass those details on to the office. There's been at least one website quoted tonight, I'll make sure that that's available online. If you do have any other questions, you can come back via the forum that we've set up. If you're not on the internet, please do go to Paul. Let's just take a moment to thank, I'm going to remember your company name, FB?
FBL Broadcasting.
FBL Broadcasting have come and done all of this work for free tonight, so everyone on the internet can see them.
Thank you.
So please, could you show them your appreciation? I don't think there's many PCCs who can say they've had an audience of this level online for a small town like ourselves. My daughter Molly has been sat there all night, filled in all of the questions, she now has right as pram as a result.
Thank you, Molly.
So please, show her your appreciation. And also, we've had the four volunteers who literally helped me out at the very last minute today, due to others going down with Lou. Thank you guys so much. I hope you found it very interesting, there are some challenges, so for example, particularly with Paul's talk about youth work, can you help, can you get involved? We know where the mayor is, come and seek him, come and talk to him, email him, look at the Facebook site. Thank you very much for coming, and have a safe journey home. Goodnight.
Thank you very much. Well, there you go, very, very well worth it. Very well worth it. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.